Okay. Town meeting members, please take your seats. Just a reminder, the seats in the front of the auditorium with the tables are for town meeting members. The open seats in the rear are open to visitors and guests. At this time, if you would, as we start all of our meetings, please rise and join me in a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the holy, righteous hands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you would, remain standing for just a moment. We can have a moment of silence for all of our troops protecting our freedoms here and around the world.
Thank you. Please proceed. Okay. Our tellers for tonight are Mr. Rosetti from Precinct 2, Ms. Whitcomb from Precinct 4. The tellers will please come forward and be sworn to their duties.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to faithfully and impartially perform your duties as a teller for the town of Saugus for town meeting for the best of your abilities?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at the-
Tellers?
Yes. If I could have the tellers, I'm sorry, we have a handout. What the tellers are currently handing out is a proposed amendment that was submitted for Article 23, which will be coming off the table tonight. So while they're passing that around, I'm going to ask the clerk if she would call a roll.
Bartolo. Bell. Berubi. Brown, Chapores, Costello, Goodwin, and Panico have already let us know that they will not be here tonight. Camuso. Connors. Codham. Cross. Curry. Davis. Delios. Doherty.
Here.
Dunn. Federico. Ferrari. Grabowski. Herman. Herman Durant. Hickman. Kelly. Long. La Presti. Minugian. McCarthy. McCullough. Meredith. Marashi. O'Brien. Haleshi. Holumba. Panetta. Peolini. Corlante. Rakinnick. Ring. Rosetti. Sacco. Shanna. Scuzzarella. Schalkowski. Spencer. Straznick. Thompson. Travers. Wallace. Whitcomb. Worthley. Forty-five in attendance, five absent.
So we have a quorum. All right, please.
We just got to share.
Sure. Do we have some additional handouts, Mr. Palante? No, I was talking to Mr. Palante. All right. Okay. Please put all cell phones and other electronic devices in silent mode. Members are reminded that the use of electronic devices during meetings is restricted to viewing documents or websites pertinent to the articles before us, and texting, gaming, or other uses are prohibited. The first order of business is accepting the minutes of the previous session. While I do have a copy of the minutes from the last meeting available, if anyone needs to review them, since the copy is currently posted on the town website, knowing that you're all diligent about reviewing them online, if there's no objection, the minutes of the last session will be accepted by unanimous consent. Hearing none, the minutes are accepted as posted. When recognized to speak, all speakers are asked to step up to the podium. Town meeting members will please state your name and the precinct represented. Other town officers or employees, state your name and position in the town, and Saugus citizens, just state your name and address. That way, everyone at home can see and identify with who they're hearing. We'll be observing the appropriate time limits for speakers per Section 208 of the town bylaws this evening. We have six zoning articles remaining on our annual town meeting warrant this year, as well as one article tabled from our last session. We do have all of the requisite recommendations from the planning boards, so we could possibly close out this annual warrant this evening. Just some housekeeping. If the night runs long, we'll interrupt for a restroom break, but if anyone needs to use the facilities during the night, by all means, do so. In the event of an alarm requiring us to evacuate, you can exit through the rear of the auditorium, go down the stairs, and make a U-turn out the front door. There's also a stairway through the doorway at my left, your right, that will take you down the side exit out to Hamilton Street. Next order of business tonight will be to hear and act on reports of committees. Are there any committees that wish to report out this evening? Okay, seeing none. We have no old business before us, so we can move on to the articles. Mr. Palante moves to take Article 23 off the table, and there is an amendment that's proposed. The amendment reads as follows: "To see if Saugus Town Meeting will vote to authorize and establish a five-person community engagement committee, the purpose of the committee is to engage citizens to bring about better understanding of Saugus Town Government. Said committee is authorized to engage the public at public forums and public places for a period of one year. Membership: The town moderator will appoint five members and two alternates, all of whom shall be town meeting members. Funding: Said committee will not expend any town funds, nor seek or accept non-resident or corporate donations, or in-kind technical support. Meetings and minutes: All meetings will take place in a public building or public location. Meeting notices will be posted on the town's bulletin boards and website at least forty-eight hours prior to each meeting, and minutes of all meetings will be filed with the town clerk. Final report: This committee will issue a written report at the 2025 Annual Town Meeting describing its activities. Town meeting may reauthorize the committee to continue at the 2025 Annual Town Meeting through a separate warrant article." Do I have a second on the amendment to Article 23? All right, so the amendment to Article 23 is moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Palante.
Matthew Palante, Precinct 2. Thank you, Mr. Town Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, third time's a charm. I met with my colleague from Precinct 10. We had a great conversation. We discussed at length this article and the possibilities of it. Again, this is for the community. Keeping it real simple, basically, it's going to be up to the committee how they go about engaging the community. I want to emphasize that all town meeting members are encouraged to join these meetings and be a part of this. It's really just an attempt to get a new conversation going around with the residents about our town and our community. Just giving it a shot. You know, basically, it's just set up for a year, so I'm asking for, you know, give it a chance, and let's see what we can create with this. I want to thank my colleague from Precinct 10 for taking the time to sit with me and give me some insight, and thank you to all the other members that gave me some of their concerns and what they thought about this article as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palante. Is there any further discussion on the amendment to Article 23? Yes.
Mr. Moderator, fellow town meeting members, Arthur Grabowski, Town Meeting, Precinct 8. Procedural question, we haven't voted to take this off the table. Why are we discussing it at this point in time?
Good point. We have a motion that was made by Mr. Palante and seconded to take Article 23 off the table. All in favor of taking Article 23 off the table for discussion? Signify by saying aye. All opposed? Okay, Article 23 is before us for discussion.
Again, fellow town meeting members, Mr. Moderator, Arthur Grabowski, Precinct 8. I'm confused. Is this an amendment, or is this the article? If this is amendment, what are we changing in the original article? To me, reading this, it sounds like a brand-new article and not an amendment.
No, it is an amendment.
So what's being changed in the original article? What's being taken out, what's being added?
We can go through the wording here. In the original article, it said that the town meeting will vote to establish a ten-person community engagement committee. In this case, it's being reduced to a five-person community engagement committee. The purpose appears to be the same. The no funding, it was added in here about not seeking, accepting non-resident or corporate donations, or in-kind technical support. And it was added, clarified as far as the meeting in minutes and the final report, and the fact that this will be reauthorized as a committee under another vote if town meeting wishes to do that at the next annual, which is in 2025.
Okay. I don't think this type of committee is necessary. I think we have Founder's Day that we've had for years, where we have any community group that wants to, has a boot there. People can talk to these people that are in these other committees, get some feedback on what's going on in the town, find out what groups are in town, what they do. That's very well-attended. We also had last year, I think it was the first time, a member of the Board of Selectmen had a, I don't know whether it was a 3-1-1 meeting or a 4-1-1 meeting at the high school that had all local town departments there to engage the people in the community and let these new people that are coming into the community interact with whatever's available in the town if they're interested, or anything else. I think this is a redundant thing. I don't see the need for this type of, this is just adding another layer onto another layer onto another layer. I really don't see the need for any of this, and I will not be supporting it.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. Any further discussion on the amendment to Article 23? Yes.
Good evening. Stacy Herman Durant, Precinct 1. I just have a quick question on the reasoning for moving it from ten members down to five. It would seem better, perhaps, to say up to a ten-person committee, so perhaps if over five are interested, they'd have that opportunity to join the committee as well. And then I did notice that in the original article, it said this committee does not have budget, and recommendations of the committee are non-binding. That is not in the current version, and I think that that's important as well. So I was just wondering, perhaps, if Mr. Palante could answer that question.
Thank you, Mr. Palante.
Matthew Palante, Precinct 2. I believe what was missing was won't see, funding, as well as nothing's non-binding. This is a volunteer committee. There isn't anything binding. It's just, in the language, it states that the purpose of this committee is to engage citizens to bring about better understanding of Saugus Town Government. So there's nothing binding about a conversation. It's just a conversation. There's nothing other than a written report at the end of this that's going to come to town meeting for the members to read. If you'd like, I can amend it again and add that in there if the body feels necessary. And then as far as the ten-person to five-person with the two alternates, this is why I encourage everybody to take part in this and to, you know, show up and be involved. After sitting with my colleague from Precinct 10 and thorough conversation, it made sense why a smaller committee in terms of making the decisions and the direction of it would work better than ten. But again, like, I want all the feedback. I'd love to see fifty members in there taking part of this committee. Again, it's volunteer. Is it necessary? No. Is this something positive that can come out of this for the residents and for town meeting and the community as a whole? Absolutely. You know, if you look at the possibility of it, I mean, I don't see anything negative that can come out of this. Only something positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palante. Any further discussion? Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Town Manager, Town Council, fellow committee members, Town Meeting Members. After the last meeting, and we talked about discussion, I thought we were going to move to make it more inclusive instead of exclusive. To me, it seems like moving it from ten to five, I don't know why it isn't open to any town meeting member that wants to participate in this committee. If we're talking about a true community engagement, the whole town puts their faith in all of us to be here to be representing them. Why wouldn't we all be included? Why would it be excluded to just five? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merton. Further discussion on Article 23, the amendment? Yes. If you would, just introduce yourself to the folks at home.
Carrie Hogan, 11 Maple Street. I apologize for my appearance. I left my softball game to come and speak on this because I feel it's such a benefit. It would be such a benefit to the town of Saugus. I consider myself to be as involved as I can be without being a member, and I've got to tell you, the town's hungry for this. The very first annual meeting of this, you know, three-part meeting, there were nine people here. Nine. Nine people. So the community is not engaged in any aspect at this point. You members are engaged, but the community is not. The people need some kind of avenue and easier access for understanding the benefits of being a town, how our town works, how can they get engaged, how do they ask questions, what's the process for the meetings, the Board of Selectmen, school committee, you know, subcommittee meetings, how is that decorum, what is the process? These are all things that are important for the people of this town to participate, and without the people participating, it leaves it up to you guys alone. And it's not the purpose of this government format. I think that there's been a lot of nitpicking on semantics and things like that. The reality is, this is something that the town needs. The town will benefit from it. They're not asking for any money. There's no budget involved. I mean, at this point, really, what is the harm? If we establish this committee and it fails, it fails, but there's a very real chance of success. And for me, I think the town of Saugus is worth taking that risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Peter Delios, Precinct 10. I'm kind of neutral on this. I like the idea. I'd like to see us engage the public more, but again, the public can come see us here after our meeting. But I think it's a great opportunity for the public to see what we do here and engage us more. But I think it shouldn't, again, just to piggyback what she just said, I don't think it should be limited to five or ten. I think it should be a rotating schedule of all of us to be there and engage the people that voted for us. So that's where I would go, with a rotating schedule of all, just like we did the coffee with precincts. We all sat down and answered questions and whatnot. I think it should be all of us. My only other concern is a double-edged sword here. If we keep it to a minimum, now there's something that can happen here, voter influence. And to me, that could be a wrong avenue that goes down. Now you have a group of select people that are influencing the voters. So I think it should be all of us on a rotating schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delios. Mr. Palante.
Matthew Palante, Precinct 2. Again, I can't say, I cannot emphasize this piece enough. Everybody should be involved in this. I'd love to see all fifty members. I'm with you, I'm with the colleague from Precinct 10. I would love to see all fifty members. Let's see if we can get five. Let's see if we can form this committee. Let's see what this committee comes up with. Let's see who shows up to these meetings and wants to be involved. This is a volunteer committee. This is, you know, the resident said it best. The community is not engaged. They're not showing up to these meetings. Why? I mean, you guys all know why they don't show up to these meetings. This is an opportunity to, like, inspire, to attract rather than promote, to try to encourage people to be more involved in our town, be more involved in our community, be more involved in our former government. This is, the former government we have is to keep the power in the residents' hands. Half of them don't even know that. I knocked on tons of doors, and people don't even know what type of government we have. Let's try to create something and see where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palante. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Long, sorry. Miss.
Hi, Stephanie Schalkowski, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. So, sure, yeah, I'm a little short. So I think I still have concerns about the way that this is written. Another concern, I don't think I've heard mentioned, is the committee is not seeking town funds or seeking or accepting non-resident or corporate donations, but what about resident donations? Why did we leave that out? So, sorry, thank you. So I don't know, I'm still confused about the way that that's written. And the other thing is, you know, this has been my first town meeting experience, but what I've really learned is everyone that comes up here that presents an article, the best ones are the ones that are thinking and already talking to the stakeholders that are involved. I think what's still missing for me is what made our educational forum so successful at the library, the ones that Peter and Carla initiated, is that it brought in the different speakers from different pieces of town government. It's not town meeting members alone that are going to help inform, help drive participation, help that education effort. It's all of us who need to sort of work together. So curious, like, have we talked to the town manager? Have we talked to the Board of Selectmen? Like, that isn't here, and I don't think I've heard that. And I am a little bit concerned about, I am a little bit concerned about that. I don't want it to be something that's driven alone from town meeting because I don't think that's going to be as successful. So those are my reservations still. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schalkowski. Further discussion, Mr. Long.
Used to be a shorter walk when you sat here.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. Actually, before I start, I have two questions. One is a procedural question here, is that can the maker of the article then make a, can he alone make an amendment to the article? And secondly, to the town council, is this article far exceed the article itself as far as scope is concerned? And the reason I ask that is, our warrant is published in the newspapers, it's published in certain sections of the town as required by our bylaw, and the folks out there in the public have a right to know exactly what we're going to be talking about here at town meeting. Otherwise, if a person is allowed to make an amendment to an article, they could propose, literally propose almost anything to make the warrant. If you get the ten signatures, then come in here and make another article, rather, an amendment, that would change the whole article itself as has been published and given out to the public. So, coming back to my question before I get started.
To answer your question, there is no prohibition against the maker of an article amending their own article. Anyone can propose an amendment, including the person who made it. When the amendment is made, town council, as we did this evening, was handed a copy of it and asked to look it over and make a determination as to whether or not it changed the scope of the original article. And I won't speak for him, but, yes, if you would, Mr. Vaspoli.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. The article is written, Article 23, was to see if the town meeting will vote to establish a ten-person community engagement committee. In the amendment, states to see if the town meeting will vote to authorize and establish a five-person community engagement committee. So I think the purpose of the article was to establish a community engagement committee, and the laws and the cases with respect to notice, it's just general notice to the public. And I think the notice to the public here was, this article is to establish a community engagement committee. So I think this amendment is within the scope of the article, even though it changes the amount of members and does change a few provisions. I do feel, in my opinion, that it is within the scope of the original article.
Thank you, Ms. Vaspoli. Mr. Long.
Yep. Thank you. Well, certainly referred from town council, and now I'm sorry I asked for his opinion, but when we look at the article itself, there's several, there's major changes here. And again, one is the change in the makeup of the membership itself, which would now be go from ten town meeting members down to five with two alternates. This article, as we know, on a roll-call vote, received a 22 to 21 favorability several weeks ago. And at that time, point in time, I thought to myself, this makes it very, very difficult for the town moderator to come up with a town meeting member from each of the precincts as the article required, since the town meeting was so almost evenly split. This other situation here is that the, having two alternates appointed by the town moderator and, yeah, and said committee will not expend money, both articles say that, but the original article had a Founder's Day table, which to me meant that somebody was going to have to put up the money unless they were going to get a freebie on the Founder's Day. Also, too, at that point in time, the realistic point of it is, why would you have a table if you didn't have something to hand out? Are we now going to have, would we at that point in time have had donations from other organizations or corporations, rather, to give us the money or give the members of that committee the money to have that table at the Founder's Day? That's just part of it. The real, look, I've been here in this town a long, long time, and if people here don't think that our residents know what goes on, you're sadly mistaken. I don't go around almost anyplace where, I mean, maybe it's because I've been around so damn long, that people don't know me, and they come up and talk to me and express their opinion. And I can tell you now that the people and the opinions that I've had expressed to me pretty much want this town to be what it is, a town, a very livable town. If we can do things to improve the- town. If we can do things to improve the livability here, that would be great. But that comes down to you, the elected town meeting members, the selectmen, and all the boards that we have available to us. But for any resident who wants to speak, they can come to this town meeting and have five minutes on every article, every article. They can sit there in the back, and as each article comes up, they can ask to be recognized. We may be here until I, God knows when, Christmas time maybe, but that's exactly how long the rights that they have. We don't need to really have a special town authorized committee that would somehow, what, push the people out the door into our polling places? That's not gonna happen. I mean, if this committee is being formed for some sort of political situations, ambitions, or whatever, fine, go ahead and do it. But I'm gonna tell you this, that in the long run, you're just really going to create pretty much aggravation and if you hit on certain subjects, but you'll also have a situation where you will probably be grossly disappointed as to what you're going to achieve. So with that, I make a motion to refer it back to the, wait, am I talking about the amendment? The amendment hasn't been adopted yet.
We're discussing the amendment at this point. We're debating the amendment, not the original article.
So, are we going to vote on the amendment first? Then the amendment will become the main article.
We're going to vote on the amendment.
So you're gonna have two votes.
Then become the main article and we'll have a vote on that, yes.
So you'll have two votes then, one on the amendment to make it, it's really a substitute motion as well as this.
We will have the two votes, yes.
Okay. Because I really wanna make a motion to refer it back to the maker when we get to the final vote on it.
You'll have a chance to do that.
We're gonna have a discussion on this. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment to Article 23? Yes, Frank.
Frank Federico, precinct seven. So I want to share a couple pieces of insight on why I personally am gonna support this article. One being, I am actually a co-admin of a Facebook community group for the town of Saugus. And in order to combat spam, we've implemented three questions. One of those three questions is to name a sitting selectman. You wouldn't believe how many Saugus residents who try to join the group can't name a sitting selectman. So I see that as an issue facing our community. I mean, at the very least, if we can address that through this group, I think it would be a success. The other is, speaking with the residents around town, they can't name the town manager, and they actually think the town manager is a mayor and always ask when we end up voting, which isn't the case. As my colleague mentioned, they can't even determine what type of government we have. And that's not a shame on them. That's just a lack of, I don't wanna use the word transparency, but I think we can do a better job educating the community and, in lack of a better term, causing a stir to get people involved in the community. In order for our town to succeed, we need to hear from everyone. We can't just assume for people, and that's what I think the maker of this article is trying to put forward. I mean, you know, I mentioned it the first time, I don't think there is a downside to it. You know, if the moderator selects you for it and you don't have the time, you don't wanna be on it, by all means, you don't have to join. You can politely decline. As far as how many people are on it, I kinda, I just look at that as semantics. I mean, it would be amazing if all 50 people showed up to put their input in. I mean, that's the idea of the article. I don't think five, 10, 20, whatever you put the language, I really don't think it's relevant for the fact that anybody can attend these meetings and have their voices heard. So, the fact that we don't, a lot of community members don't know who the sitting selectman are, can't name the town manager, there are issues facing the community in not knowing the government. And that's not even touching on voter turnout. Voter turnout is dwindling. I mean, I think we had, don't quote me on this, maybe 50, 200, 50, 300, and we had a hot topic on the last election, but before that, we've had much lower numbers. I mean, if we can do any amount of good, even if it's just one thing, why not try it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Federico. Ms. Meredith.
I guess now I'm more confused. Last meeting, Mr. Federico mentioned voter participation, and he's mentioning elected officials. Is the idea and the intent for community engagement, or is it more political?
Thank you, Ms. Meredith. Any further discussion on the amendment to Article 23? Mr. Pallante?
Matthew Pallante, precinct two. I'm getting real comfortable coming up here. Just a couple of things. The population, our community has changed in the last 10 years. Forget the last 40. This, to be very extremely clear, this is not political. It's got nothing to do with politics. This has to do with residents and the community. And again, like, everybody here is encouraged. I beg you, please come, please be part of this. I limited it to five people with two alternates because I took what somebody with way more experience doing this stuff suggested, because it's easier to agree when you have less people. Now, if we have 20 people there that all have great ideas, well, guess what we're gonna be discussing? Those great ideas. I was told most committees in this town are five people. Made sense to bring it down to five people, two alternates. Is there five people in here that would actually volunteer for this committee? The table at Founder's Day was an example. It was an example of an idea of what I meant by community engagement. I'm creating a yard sale event for my neighborhood. So the five streets in my, in my immediate neighborhood, I'm creating a yard sale, neighborhood yard sale.
You need a permit.
I'll get the permit. I hope. Hopefully, I'm gonna, I'll work on that. Thank you. So it's basically, well, there's no, there's no street closures. It's everybody set up in your own driveway. Okay, no, that's right. You're right. We do need a permit. We'll get permits. We'll work on that. The town, the city next to us is doing a citywide yard sale event, free permits. We'll create something in Saugus. I'm looking to just get people involved, get excited, be happy to be a part of this community. Not like, you know, I gotta tell you, when I decided to run and I talked to my friends in Saugus, you know what they said? Saugus politics are toxic. That's what they said. I disagree. And I wanna show them that that's not the case. I wanna show them that people get involved because they care. People are here on a Monday night in the summer because they care. Your residents have a tough time getting here. I was talking to one of my colleagues earlier, four kids. She got four, four kids. Thank God the husband's around to take them to the practices. People are busy. People are trying to afford groceries and gas. We gotta, we're the leaders. We gotta engage them. We want, we had 25% voter turnout. I correct myself, last week I said less than 25%. It was just above 25%. That tells us people are not engaged. If you're not showing up to vote, if you don't even know who the town manager is, who's out there cutting lawns, if you can't name him, if, you know how many people I've talked to that are like, what's a town meeting member? This is our, this is our community. This is something positive. This is, this is absolutely nothing negative and nothing that should be voted on four, five, six times. This is, and to address any questions about money, there's, there's no money necessary. If anybody, you can ask anybody who knows me, I do all kinds of volunteer work. I'm on the board for a nonprofit. I'm a founding board member. I am really good at getting people to say yes to free stuff, like a free table at Founder's Day. Yes, to my colleague. Yes, free table at Founder's Day, absolutely. Why not? It's possible. Anything is possible. If you saw where I was 15 years ago and then you see me today, you would believe it too. I promise you, anything's possible. This is for the community, this is for residents. Let's try to do something positive to, to change the perspective of town government in Saugus and town politics in Saugus. This has nothing to do with politics. It's town meeting members, and I absolutely agree. The, the whole thing that our colleague from precinct 10 put on for the new members in, in this town meeting hall was amazing. And it took the people who were, who created that to invite the town manager, to invite town council, to invite, you know, the, the top key players in the town. And that's gonna be the committee's job, if that's what they decide to do. This is a good thing. I ask that you vote to pass the amendment. I ask that you do not vote to send back to the maker, and then you vote to pass this for a third time, three times. This is, it's, this is a positive thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pallante. Any further discussion on the amendment? Yes, Mr. Whitcomb.
Good evening, everyone. Andrew Whitcomb, 212 Essex Street, apartment 102. I guess it's more of a clarification, because I think the gentleman from precinct two just answered it, but one of the things that made the forums so intuitive for me, and some children will listen to, and I know the gentle lady from precinct four touched on this, was that they brought in so many different stakeholders from the town. I know the two members that set those up invited those people, but would that be the intentions for the committee? Would this group of five to seven sit together at the beginning of the, you know, the first session and sit there and plan out what they're gonna do and who they're gonna talk to, and then which events they're gonna go to, how they're gonna get free tables and things, and then spread that out further? Because there's a thin line between civic engagement and political activism, and I don't, you know, I think that's, that's what's catching me up. You know, you could go to the cable station and have a couple of round tables. In fact, I know the cable station offered to film the ones we did here. You could bring that back. I did a TV show for a couple of years that was set around the same thing. I believe Ms. Rosetti would know more about this, but maybe 30 years ago, there was a booklet that was printed up called Know Your Town. It's on display at the library, and I have a copy of it myself, that listed out a ton of different information about town bylaws and planning the different departments, who hires who, who has which authority in town. It even listed out every polling place and every street in town. I don't know how they distributed them, but that could be something you guys looked at. Again, I know that was sponsored by some companies and things, but the idea was to bring a pocket version of the town charter to every voter, to give them a chance to see which departments hold what authority, who hires who, and who's gonna fill that pothole in front of my driveway. You know, I just, what's the direction this is gonna go in? That's, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb.
Matt Pallante, precinct two. I swear this is the last time I'm coming up here. I don't care what anyone says. This, those are great ideas. To the last speaker, I hope you show up to the meetings. I mean, you show up to every other meeting in this town. I really hope you show up and you give these ideas, great ideas. I would love to have a meeting where the, where the town manager shows up and the residents get an opportunity to meet the town manager. We can do a meet the town manager night. You'd love that. And have the residents come. I mean, this is what we're talking about. Literally, creating something like this, right? We're already beginning. Look, everybody's involved now. This is the committee. Here we go. This is what we're talking about here, guys. There's nothing more, there's nothing, like, there's nothing, there's no hidden ulterior motives here. This isn't political. This is creating something for the community. And I love the idea of a meet the town manager night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pallante. Further discussion? Ms. Hickman.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Jaclyn Hickman, precinct five. I just, I have a question for Mr. Pallante. I understand you're saying that people don't understand who the town manager is, who the board of selectmen is, who their town, town meeting member, well, I'm just saying in general, who their town meeting members are. I know that we have websites online that show that. We also have voters that do show up, and they know who they are voting for when it comes time for that. So that is my hangup, if this is what it's for, is to introduce who the town meeting members are, or who our town manager is, board of selectmen is. I understand what you're saying, and you're trying to get community engagement. I just don't fully support it, just for the fact of introducing who we are to the community. I feel like if the community is truly interested, they will look into it themselves as well. And that's pretty much all I'm gonna touch on with it. So I will not support the article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hickman. Any further discussion on the amendment to Article 23? Yes, Mr. Grabowski.
Mr. Moderator, fellow town meeting members, Arthur Grabowski, precinct eight. I'm sitting here listening to people in this, elected officials, in my opinion, browbeating, browbeating the electorate in this, and residents in this town. If there's, if there's voter apathy, that's their prerogative to have voter apathy. It's not our job to go out there and pull them by the ear and say, come and get involved in your town. These people will get involved. How many precincts over the years sometimes don't even get five members to take out nomination papers? How many, and again, a typical example is the amount of people that vote. We have 20 some odd thousand, I don't know how many registered voters there are, but we have over 20,000 residents, and we get 2000 to 3000 people to vote. I don't like the fact that we're browbeating the electorate and the residents of this town and say, oh, geez, you're not smart enough to come and get involved in town. If you wanna get involved in town, there's plenty of opportunities. People have mentioned many opportunities. There's a lot of stuff online that people can find out who their town meeting members are. Every town meeting member's address is online, every town meeting member's telephone number is online. I don't think we're going to tie a noose around people's necks and say, come on, get involved in the town, get involved in the town. I've seen too many times when people want others to get involved in town, and the involvement turns political. There's not much in this town that doesn't turn political. And I would hate to see that happen. We just went through a very divisive electoral period where this town was turned upside down, and people were browbeaten to vote yes, vote no. I don't wanna see that happen again. If people in this community have reasons why they don't wanna get involved, then that's their prerogative not to get involved. And the people that do wanna get involved will come to the meetings, will come to town meeting, will come if an article is affecting their lives or their neighborhood. They'll come and speak, or they'll come, how many times do residents, I think town, the board of selectmen have a citizens' comment period, where anybody can get up and voice an opinion or ask a question. And I know from meeting with the town manager, that the town manager's door is always open for anybody to come and talk to the town manager about any issues. I don't like the fact that we're browbeating and criticizing residents of this community who, for whatever reason, decide, and I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a conscious decision to not get involved. I think that they have other things to do. When something affects their neighborhood or affects their pocketbook or affects something that is, implement something in their lives that they really care about, they'll get involved. Come to, come to Founder's Day. How many people come to Founder's Day? Hundreds, if not thousands, of people show up to Founder's Day. The opportunities are there. The places are there. Town Hall is open many hours. Town Hall has, in fact, on Monday nights, the Town Hall is open till, I believe, 7:30. For residents who don't have the ability to come during the daytime because they're busy, they can come and talk to any department. There's somebody manning every department in Town Hall in the evenings. And like I said, the town manager, the board of selectmen, even the school committee, most committees, everything is open. Anybody can come and speak. We had a big turnout at the Board of Appeals a while back over an issue that affected the neighborhood. So people showed up. There were a lot of people. There were a lot of people there with varying opinions. And I just think that we're not giving the residents of this town enough credit to make these decisions on their own without having us tell them, "Oh, come, come, we want you to come." So I think that it's not necessary that we do this.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. Mr. Camuso.
I don't, Robert Camuso, Precinct 2. This is a community engagement committee, just another avenue for the residents to talk to us. Nothing more. Everybody's still going to have the opportunity to come to this and speak up. So Precinct 4, remember, nothing's getting shut down. It's another open door for residents to talk to and get engagement. That's all this is. Don't make it more complicated than what it is, because I can see it. I mean, I'm supporting this because it needs, this town needs more communications. It's always, more transparency. This is an opportunity. I mean, I don't know how much more we can talk about this or how many times we can vote on this. It's pretty simple. It's a community engagement committee. It's a volunteer position. You don't want to get involved in it, don't get involved with it. The more, the merrier. The more people you have involved, the better outcome it will be. Residents should be part of this. That's all it is.
Thank you, Mr. Camuso. Any further discussion?
Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, Peter Minugian, Precinct 10. I heard my colleague, veteran colleague from Precinct 4 mention scope. Scope's a real issue. And remember, a couple of years ago, we amended a zoning article on marijuana and wiped out buffer zones to residential areas. And the Attorney General said it's okay. So scope, it's all in the, I think the scope is, I agree with town council on that. You know, the years ago, and I don't necessarily agree with the maker of the amendment in terms of what he says this will do, because if you read the language, the original article said to have, generate more participation of community members. Okay? So that, I agree with my colleague from Precinct 8. That almost sounds political, to get people involved. If you look at the paragraph now, it's the first paragraph, is to engage citizens to bring about better understanding of town government. Better understanding. It's not getting them to vote. The town clerk's doing everything possible to get people to vote. There's nothing more that can be done to get people to vote. I agree. If they don't want to vote, don't vote. But the better understanding of town government, that's the thrust of it, in my opinion. The moderator will pick five members. Do you really think he's going to put together the people from that side or all the people from this side? It's sad that we have to have sides, so hopefully we can be more collaborative, because I think we are making great progress. And if you want to have a town manager, that's the board of selectmen or town manager. Town meeting does not get involved with what the town manager does with the board of selectmen and vice versa. Okay? That's totally something that should not be, he could be invited to the meeting, sure. Couple other points. There used to be a League of Women Voters in this town that would put out a brochure, Know Your Town, and they would do just this, but we haven't had a League of Women Voters for many, many years. The membership, I felt that 10 members was too unwieldy. I don't know that we even get nine people to show up at a finance committee meeting anymore. You had a sidewalk committee with 10 people, they couldn't meet, they couldn't get a quorum. The five members would come up with what the citizen, former town meeting member, Andrew Whitcomb, brought up. They would determine the direction consistent with this. And if you feel that it's going to get political in a year, wipe it out, end it. If you see it's going in the wrong direction, you could end it. I was really concerned that a corporate citizen was going to try to take this thing over and use it for public relations. And that's why that language is there, that not to accept corporate donations or in-kind technical support, because we do have clear evidence that influence and finances did take place in the last election. So it will sunset in a year, and my reconsideration was based on the fact it was such a close vote. This really should have a broader base of support than 23 to 22 or whatever it was. And the thought was to try to make something that's more palatable to people and not make it seem as though it's going to get people involved that aren't involved. If they have a forum at the library and how town government works, what's wrong with that? You know, so I'll be supporting the amendment. I don't see any harm in it, and if it turns out bad, we can wipe it out in a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minugian. Any further discussion on the amendment to Article 23? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? Just changing chairs here, because if that one keeps sinking, in 10 minutes, I'll be sitting in Ellen's office. No, I spoke with town council. This was submitted not as a substitute motion, but as an amendment, and it qualifies as such. Some of the original wording is still there. There are a couple of items on it that have changed. So at this time, we're going to vote on the amendment to Article 23. Sure. All right, so this is the vote. The town clerk is going to call the roll. If you're in favor of the article, of the amendment as presented, and I'll read it one more time, to see if Saugus Town Meeting will vote to authorize and establish a five-person community engagement committee. The purpose of the committee is to engage citizens to bring about better understanding of Saugus town government. Said committee is authorized to engage the public at public forums and public places for a period of one year. Membership, the town moderator will appoint five members and two al venants, all of whom shall be town meeting members. Funding, said committee will not expend any town funds nor seek or accept non-resident or corporate donations or in-kind technical support. Meetings and minutes, all meetings will take place in a public building or public location. Meeting notices will be posted on the town's bulletin boards and website at least 48 hours prior for each meeting, and minutes of all meetings will be filed with the town clerk. Final report, this committee will issue a written report at the 2025 Annual Town Meeting describing its activities. Town meeting may reauthorize the committee to continue at the 2025 Annual Town Meeting through a separate warrant article. All in favor of the amendment as presented? When the town clerk calls your name, signify by saying aye or yes. If you're opposed, signify by saying no or nay. Town clerk?
Bartolo. Bell. Barubi. Brown. Camuso. Chapores. Connors. Costello. Codham. Cross. Davis. Delios. Dougherty. Dunn. Federico. Goodwin. Grabowski. Herman Durant. Hickman. Kelly. Long. LaPreste. Minugian. McCarthy. McCullough. Meredith. Mareschi. O'Brien. Haleshi. Panetta. Panico. Peolini. Parlente. Ring. Rosetti. Sacco. Shenna. Scuzzarella. Schalkowski. Spencer. Straznick. Thompson. Wallace. Whitcomb. Worthley. The count is 20 yays, 24 nays, and 5 absent.
Okay, with that, the amendment to Article 23 has failed. So at this point, do we have any discussion before we vote on Article 23 as originally Hearing none. I'm going to call for the question, and I'm going, yes. Okay, yes. We have a motion before us to refer Article 23 back to the maker. Do I have a second? All right, moved and seconded. And where there's some dissension here, though, unless, what's that? You'd like a roll call vote. Okay, we're going to have a roll call vote on the motion to refer Article 23 back to the maker. So in this case, a yes vote, the article will be referred back to the maker. A no vote, the article stays before us for discussion and a final vote.
Bartolo. Bell. I'm sorry. Thank you. Brown. Camuso. Chapores. Connors. Costello. Codham. Cross. Curry. Davis. Delios. Dougherty. Dunn. Federico. Ferrari. Goodwin. Herman Durant. Hickman. Kelly. LaPreste. Minugian. McCarthy. Meredith. Mareschi. O'Brien. Haleshi. Palumba. Panetta. Panico. Peolini. Parlente. Rikinnick. Ring. Rosetti. Sacco. Shenna. Scuzzarella. Schalkowski. Spencer. Straznick.
A yes vote is to refer it back to the maker, and no vote is to keep it before us.
Travers. Wallace. Whitcomb. 27 yays, 17 nays, 5 absent.
With that, the original Article 23 is referred back to the maker. As a courtesy to the Planning Board, Mr. Long moves Article 28 for consideration. To see if the Saugus Town Meeting will vote to add 10 Harvard Avenue with references M 006-H, B 0018, and L 0014, consisting of 12,246 square feet, added to the waterfront mixed-use overlay district known as Section 18 of the Saugus zoning bylaws, submitted by Michelle Mercado, 10 Harvard Ave. We have the recommendation from the Planning Board. They stated, after receiving testimony from the article's proponent and opening the hearing to public comment, the board discussed Article 28 and voted to close the public hearing based on concerns about piecemeal zoning of a single parcel, lack of information regarding the proposal, concerns over legal issues, as well as concerns about the effect of the proposed rezoning on neighbors located in the underlying residential zone, zoning district, the Planning Board voted 4-0 not to recommend passage of Article 28. So do I have a second on Article 28? All right, Article 28 moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen. Town meeting member, Precinct 10, Darren Ring. I'm actually pretty disappointed at the Planning Board's recommendation, but I totally understand why, and that's why they're here. After speaking to some of my colleagues and stuff, and the actual homeowners, I would like to make a motion to send this article back to the petitioner and not kill it. So my motion is to send it back to the petition.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ring. We have a motion before us to send Article 28 back to the maker, Michelle Mercado. We have a second. Any discussion on the motion to refer? All right, hearing none, all in favor of referring Article 28 back to the maker, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Article 28, Mr. Minugian abstained, and Article 28 is referred back to the maker. All right, as a courtesy to the Planning Board, Mr. Long moves Article 29 for consideration. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Saugus by adding the following. Amend Article 21 Business Highway Sustainable Development Zoning District, Section 21.10 Dimensional and Density Regulations, by deleting the following first sentence in 21.10D, additional setback requirements within the BH and BHR sub-districts. One, a 50-foot setback buffer shall be created from any yard side that abuts an existing residential district zone. By adding the following new first sentence in 21.10D, additional setback requirements within the BH and BHR sub-districts, one, a 75-foot setback buffer zone shall be created from any yard side that abuts an existing residential district zone. So basically, they're just adjusting the setback buffer for yard side from 50 feet to 75 feet. Do I have a, and I do have the recommendation from the Planning Board. The Planning Board voted to recommend passage of Article 29, recommended a yes vote. Do I have a second on Article 29? All right, any discussion on Article 29? Mr. Serino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen in the audience at home tonight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members, ladies and gentlemen, in the audience at home tonight. I'd like to... The decision to propose these articles had to do with the development at 860 Broadway, which is Gulf Town, it's a 10-acre site. 245 residential units, 155 one-bedroom units, 92-bedroom units. It is one of the three developments approved under a former planning board and under the guidelines of the original 2015 Business Highway Sustainable District, which allowed no commercial development, which we did change in 2021 Town Meeting, and allowed as of right building height of 55 feet, which is one of the proposed changes tonight. I'd just like to note, I did have some discussions with some of the planning board members, and I want to commend the planning board. For although they had no new developments before them yet, they have, you know, straightened out a lot of issues in the process. They've straightened out more from the past two developments out of the three. And I also want to congratulate and thank the Town Manager. He does give all these boards, not only the planning board, but other boards the resources that they need. They are only volunteer boards, and they need the help. The proposed zoning articles are intended to provide great protection to abutting residential neighborhoods. It increases the 50-foot setback from any side yard that abuts a residential district to a 75-foot side back. And that's in both the business... You have two districts, the Business Highway and the Business Highway Residential District inside the Route 1 Business Highway Sustainable District. The Hilltop's 125 feet from Forest Street. And, you know, the neighbors were very upset when that building went up at 55 feet. They took the existing as-of-right 55-foot development without any approval from the Board of Selectmen to go that height. And this new zoning law will also limit the height of the businesses in the Business Highway Residential District to 33 stories' party feet. And there are only seven lots in this Business Highway Residential District, and I have the list here. The first lot out of the seven is... They're paper streets over beside Wayloo's. There Mildred Road, Briar Goldie. The Wayloo's property was not included in the Business Highway District because of Caddy Farm. We wanted to leave that out so we'd have more protection for hopefully the neighborhoods in Precinct 2. The other lot is where the Essex Street ramp is behind the gas station. There, and I think it abuts Pleasant and Cherry Street, but it's a small piece of property. The third is, it's a large piece of property. It's from the Continental Restaurant to Home Depot. There's two pieces of property in that district there. You have a Kiki Realty, which is a Continental Restaurant. That's 14.7 acres. And this is RFF Realty, that's 16 acres that abuts that. And they abut Sanders Drive, I mean, yeah, Sanders Drive, David Drive, that goes all the way to Home Depot. So that will be protected. The other lot is on Hawk Street. If you go up Hawk Street, it's the last street on the right-hand side by the old Donatello's Restaurant. When you drive up Hawk Street, you see a little piece of land on the right-hand side, and that's protected under the Business Highway District. The other property is the Plumbo Property. It abuts all the residents on Forest Street. That's about a four-acre lot, I believe. And that's included in the district. The other one was the Hilltop Property. But that's been developed, and like I say, at that point, they were able to go up to the 55 feet without any permission from the town. And the last lot is Walnut Street. It goes from the Walnut Street Bridge over to Spring Street, sort of like behind Bob's and the Salvation Army. That's another small strip of land, very close to the neighborhood. So those are the only seven lots in the Business Highway District that would be subject to the three-stories' party-feet height limit. So the proposed zoning articles are always... Also intended to give the town greater control over development. It eliminates the as-of-right 55-building height and the ability to create lots like they did at the Hilltop to create two bedrooms. Basically, that's what they did on the top floor. This 50-year zoning, it restores it to the... Anything over 40 feet would require an S2 permit from the Building Department. I mean, from the Board of Selectmen. So it restores a 50-plus-year zoning requirement than anything over 40 feet in Saugus, not only on Route 1, requiring S2 permit. And I'd like to know that this requirement of anything over 40 feet coming before the Board of Selectmen does protect and maintain the character of town for the last 50-plus years. And also, you have to keep in mind, like with the Hilltop, I mean, the Collum property, it opens the door for negotiations. So if a developer wanted to exceed the height of three-stories' party feet, they would have to come to the Board of Selectmen, and then we could put conditions on it, like saying, "We only want..." "We only want one-bedroom apartments." What was that?
We're discussing Article 29 at this point.
29, yeah. And, well, this includes all the articles, this presentation here. And we need reasonable conditions for the height variance. And like I said, it gives the town overall control of development. And then I'll get into density when that comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serena.
So what this article does is it increases the setback to anything that abuts a residential district from 50 feet to 75 feet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serena. All right, any further discussion on Article 29? Yes, Mr. Grabowski?
Mr. Moderator, fellow Town Meeting members, Arthur Grabowski, Precinct 8. I have two questions. One of which, if this article that we're discussing now passes, when is this zoning, when does it take effect? Immediately? Can somebody answer me that? Okay, and if that's the case, does this have the ability for a developer to kind of come in under the wire, under the zoning that it is now, before the Attorney General approves it? Does that have an open door where they can slide in there and go under the old rules as opposed to the new ones? It would have been filed before today? Another question I have, and it's just... I don't understand, if Town Meeting is responsible for zoning laws, what is... And I'm not trying to be confrontational. What is the rationale of allowing a developer to go before the Board of Selectmen for an S2 permit to override what the zoning laws are that this board, this Town Meeting authorizes? I don't understand why that allows them to go to a somewhat more political group to get what they want, bypassing what this Town Meeting voted for in terms of zoning rules? That's maybe a rhetorical question. If somebody could answer that for me, I'd appreciate it.
Just for clarification, if Town Meeting votes any of the zoning articles tonight, they're locked in. I don't believe a developer can come in. You know, and they become official once it's approved by the Attorney General's office. But if you do vote any zoning articles tonight, they're locked in, and a developer has to come in and read zoning articles. As far as your question, I really don't understand. The three-stories' party feet has always been in our zoning law since the '60s.
No, that's not possible.
So...
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members, ladies and gentlemen. I think the Speaker's question is why there are provisions that allow the Town Meeting to vote a zoning article, and then the Selectmen have a right to issue a special permit, sort of, I think he meant, overruling the Selectmen. But the way the zoning laws are written, there are provisions for special permits. The special permit granting authorities in this town are both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Appeals, and it's laid out in the zoning bylaws. What a special permit is, is it's an allowance under the zoning bylaws for an applicant to come in and conform to certain requirements. In that special permit granting authority, in some cases, the Board of Selectmen, in some cases, the Board of Appeals, may grant a special permit. So it's all laid out in the zoning bylaws. Depending on which type of special permit we're talking about, it'll be either the zoning, it'll either be the Board of Appeals or the Board of Selectmen. But it's laid out. It's not like it's overruling the Town Meeting, because the Town Meeting has voted to enact that particular zoning bylaw to authorize those special permit granting authorities to issue special permits. But they must comply with certain conditions under the zoning bylaws.
Thank you, Mr. Best Bully and Mr. Grabowski. Any further discussion on Article 29? Mr. Travis, and then Ms. Panetta.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members. Tom Travis, Precinct 8, Chairman of the Board of Appeals. And I also was very proud to serve on the Town Manager's Economic Development Committee, which actually drew up all these overlays, the highway, the waterfront, along with the Mildred District. This 75 to 50 feet was pretty contentious during the committee. And it was mixed, and we voted for the 50 feet. I don't see where that... To date, I need a little bit more where it's been a problem. I came in early to the meeting, and I wanted to see what the difference of 25 feet was. And with help, I measured it out. And if one of the televisions standing on that piece of tape I put on the floor, that from where he's standing to the Town Manager is 25 feet. So that's how far... That's what we're debating, whether or not 25, that 25 feet. On the existing developments, I drove by Forest Street today. That's got to be at least 125 to 150 feet away. I didn't measure it. I don't see a problem there. I don't see a problem with that landing. It just seems like everywhere we look, we're trying to cycle development almost. We had economic development committee was to come add development, and we're just trying to make it harder for everyone. I think there was somewhere $3 million worth of building permits last year. I think the town liked that money. There's a lot of tax money coming online. And if we continue... Mr. Rose, you can sit down. I think they say the 25 feet. But $3 million worth of permits, a lot of that was Route 1. There's still something, like, I don't... My figure might be a little bit off. But there's still something like 30% is empty storefront on Route 1. I mean, we have to develop that. We have 6, 7, and 8 thousand dollars in more tax bills. The reason we don't have 11, and 12, and 13 thousand dollar tax bills is Route 1. I mean, we have... Somebody has to step up for development. I don't want it all in my backyard, but this... It just so... These articles are all anti-development. It's out there that it's not a good place to do business in Saugus. They make it hard for you. And these articles are all... Every one of them is just making it hard for it. Some of them are silly. I mean, we go after Park Inspector, we go after this, we go after that. We're just kicking the developers to the side. When they have a choice, they pick other communities when things are even. All right? That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Travis. Ms. Panetta?
Good evening, Mr. Town Moderator, Town Meeting members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Deborah Panetta, and I live at 1 Bellevue Street. So the first article for your consideration is Article 29. And when I read this article, I think of people that live near developments. This article gives an extra layer of protection for residents. And these articles are just trying to put some safeguards in place. And when you vote on this Article 29, just think to yourself, "What if it was you?" And you want... Wouldn't you want that extra 25 feet going from 50 feet to 75 feet? Wouldn't you want protection for your home and for your family? That's how I read it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Panetta. Mr. Minugian, and then Mr. Grabowski. All right, Mr. Grabowski.
I'm sorry to get up and take up your valuable time, but, Mr. Moderator, fellow Town Meeting members, Arthur Grabowski, Precinct 8. I take exception to a comment that was just made, that these articles are anti-development. These articles are not anti-development. These articles are pro-residents. It's about time that this town stood up for the residents. And as the previous speaker spoke, what if it was in your neighborhood or your precinct? We have to start protecting the residents, the residents, the homeowners. This is not anti-development. In fact, if you look at Route 1, most of Route 1 has been developed pro-development at the expense of the residents of this town. Yeah, we're lucky we have Route 1. But we don't need these eyesores that go up as high as they want to go and keep going and going and get bigger and bigger. And we don't need these developers that come in and promise you the world, like promised us a first-class hotel up there where the batting cages used to be. Has anybody seen the first-class hotel come in up there yet? That was promised to this town. A first-class hotel. What have we got there? We got more development, we got more apartments. And every one of these apartments strange the infrastructure of this town. Yes, we need development, but we need development that's far the town and walks the fine line between what's good for the town and what's good for the developer. Not what's good for the developer, but forget about the town. More kids in the schools, two, three-bedroom apartments, promises that are never kept. So I urge you to vote for this, and let's start representing our residents and our homeowners that live in these areas. And, you know, if a developer wants to come in, it's his dime. If he wants to make some money based on what our rules are, well, that's all well and good, but based on our rules, not based on what he wants to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. Further, Mr. Minugian?
Moderator, Mr. Minugian, Precinct 10. Ladies and gentlemen, and I served on the Economic Development Committee, previous speaker from Precinct 8. We came up with Article 21 after at least a year's worth of work with MAPC and Robert Lawongo. And it's tragic what happens when you see language that was not followed by the planning board to create attractive mixed-use sustainable development centers that ensure the development and redevelopment of a mix of compatible uses, including the creation of new housing opportunities. Or how about provide the broadest range of compatible commercial and residential uses, allows for a wide variety of mixed uses, prohibits residential-only development in favor of a mixed-use of development? How is Caruso's behind Fuddruckers? How is that allowed? It's residential-only. There's no commercial there. Correct me if I'm wrong. How is it? The vision was to have something like Market Street, Linfield. You know, that you'd have that mix of uses. And when the Hilltop came, people were shocked. I think the Selectmen came up with a statistic about what percentage of it was apartments. And my colleague from Precinct 8 pointed out, when Mr. Basamian and Mr. Touchek came before this town, they had a soiree up at Pachi's, up at Rosaria's. They talk about the Lennox Hotel and all these promises. Promise is broken. Okay? They're building hotels elsewhere. Now, I understand they want to change all that, and they're going before the planning board. So you, you know, this is like a Hobson's Choice. You can have whatever you want, as long as it's an apartment building in Saugus. And the cows have already left the barn. And we have our friends up at the Collums and Mattys, they got what they wanted for the height, and the neighbors didn't complain. Some of them got parties, I understand. But they didn't complain, did they? And so now, we're trying to... And so now we're trying to rein it all in. I agree with you somewhat, my colleague from Precinct 8, perhaps we're over-correcting. But this is what happens when developers take advantage of either a weak planning board or someone that's not paying attention. Town meeting did its job. These laws, the language is there. They could have been followed, but it wasn't. So I'll be supporting these because there are no ANRs planned. I went to the Planning Board, I asked that question. The zoning will be frozen, as the Selectmen points out. So that there, you know, there are vulnerable neighborhoods, Sanders Drive, Indian Valley, Forest Street, and there are still vulnerable neighborhoods that could be impacted by a, by a weak planning board, which we don't have now, but, I don't know, it's very disappointing what happened because this was, this was a good overlay, and it just was abused.
Thank you, Mr. Minugian. Any further discussion on Article 29? Mr. Long.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, very brief, just to clear, clear up a couple of issues here. When we talk about us being anti-business, that is so far from the truth. One thing that you can do up on that overlay on Route 1, you can develop it either as a mixed use, or you can develop it under the underlying zoning, which is a B2. In other words, you can have your businesses up there just as it is, like, for example, the Square One Mall. But if you want to develop it with mixed housing and everything, that's a different classification. So there's two really, two classifications that you have up on Route 1. With regard to the, the articles that are seeking to adjust certain elements of that overlay, absolutely necessary. If you think that this overlay is working, I would advise all of you to get in your automobiles and drive over to Essex Landing and see what you see. We were promised a hotel over there. They're coming to the Planning Board asking to be relieved of that obligation. If you want to take a look, and by the way, when you go up Collins Avenue, you'll see a crater on the right and heavy equipment over there on the left, which you'll see is apartment buildings, that's it. The overlay is supposed to have retail on the first floors at a certain percentage. If you go over to the old golf ball driving range, if you want to see something that's, it would scare you a little bit if you have, such as our chairman has a home at the end of Longwood Avenue, take a look at what's going on over there. And there is no retail over there. Nothing is on those floors, on the first, and they're proposing three buildings. The third building, and the latest plan that I've seen, site plan, would be only 15 feet off of an R1 district, single-family residential. So is this overlay plan really working for them? Initially, it brings money in as far as the permitting process is concerned, but the long term, they're very, very difficult to work with, and the people who really want to do it are not people who are in here for the town of Saugus. So our rules and regulations have to be what we think that we can live with as a community, not what somebody else thinks that they can live with. So, and by the way, I welcome any of you, I'm a new member, retread really, to the Planning Board, I invite any of you to come to our meetings to see what it's like and see what's being proposed. So I'll leave it at that. I hope you support these articles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any further discussion, Mr. Rosetti?
Good evening, Town Meeting Members. Peter Rosetti, Precinct 2. I'm presently on the Board of Appeals. We deal with S2 permits. Formally, I was on the Planning Board for a number of years. People have talked about these requirements. This is the third set of restrictions that we're putting in. We've done this in the past two town meetings, we've increased the restrictions each time, but there haven't been any new projects that have been proposed since these restrictions started. Now, what happened with things like the Hilltop property, we had months and months and months of hearings on that. We listened to the neighbors. We had every single meeting before we started the discussion, we made a promise to the residents that the Hilltop property would not go through to Forest Street. And we kept that promise. It has not happened. But every single meeting, someone would get up and say, are they coming through to Forest Street? We had rules in place that prevented that. With the comparison between that and Market Street and Linfield, it's not really a good comparison because Market Street and Linfield was like a magnitude of 10, the size of that property. It was much, much bigger, so you could do more with it. You could have more restrictions. We don't have that at Hilltop location. Essex Landing, when Essex Landing first came in, yes, they were proposing a hotel. They were proposing a convention center. They were proposing a lot of things. But what happened was COVID. When COVID hit, the markets changed. When the markets changed, the financing changed. The need for the hotel was not there because people were not traveling. They couldn't get the bank financing that they needed. With, with changes in development, they tend to move relatively quickly. Some of these projects are five-year projects. When you plan something and you have a concept, you come in, you try to develop that concept. We saw what happened with things like Cowloon. They negotiated back and forth. It worked. But if you, if you don't plan ahead, you're going to have a major problem. Now, creating more and more restrictions is not going to endear developers or anyone to come in and do things in Saugus. It's, it's a mistake to keep adding restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosetti. Any further discussion on Article 29? All right. I see no further discussion at this point, so yes, we'll move the question on Article 29. All in favor of the article as presented? What's that? Zoning articles do require a 2/3 vote to pass. So all in favor of, we have a request for a roll call vote on Article 29. A yes vote when the clerk calls your name is in favor of Article 29 as written, basically changing the 50-foot setback to the 75-foot setback on yard sides that abut residential district zones. The no vote is opposed to Article 29, no or nay. So at that point, I will ask the clerk to take the roll.
Bartolo. Bell. Barubi. Brown. Camuso. Chapouras. Connors. Costello. Codham. Cross. Curry. Delios. Doherty. Dunn. Federico. Ferrari. Goodwin. Grabowski. Herman Durand. Hickman. Kelly. Long. LaPreste. Minugian. McCarthy. McCullough. Meredith. Mareschi. O'Brien. Haleshi. Palumba. Panetta. Panico. Hayolini. Polente. Ring. Rosetti. Sacco. Shenna. Scuzzarella. Schalkowski. Spencer. Straznick. Thompson. Travers. Wallace. Whitcomb. Worthley. The count is 38 yea, 38 yea, six nays, five absent.
Okay, with that, Article 29 has passed. As a courtesy to the Planning Board, Mr. Long moves Article 30 for consideration to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Saugus by adding the following. Amend Article 21, Business Highway Sustainable Development Zoning District, Section 21.10, Dimensional and Density Regulations, by deleting the following section under 21.10E Height. One, as of right, four stories with a maximum height of 55 feet. 1A structures located less than 25 feet from any buffer zone setback may not exceed three stories and 40 feet in height. And by adding the following new section under 21.10E Height. One, any height over three stories, 40 feet, will require a special permit from the Board of Selectmen. SP2. 1A structures located less than 25 feet from any buffer zone setback may not exceed three stories and 40 feet in height. So basically, all that's changing is the line as of right, four stories with a maximum height of 55 feet will become any height over three stories, 40 feet, will require a special permit from the Board of Selectmen, SP2. Do I have a second on Article 30? Article 30 moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Serena.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. Like I said earlier, what this does is it gives more control to the town. Now, anything over 40 feet would need a special permit from the Board of Selectmen, and that's what, even in town, anything over 40 feet would do that. And it gives, like the gentleman from Precinct 2 said, we were successful with the Hill, with our Collins. But that was because they couldn't get four votes from the Board of Selectmen to go up that high to 70 feet. And then they made an agreement with us to do one-bedroom apartments only, so we wouldn't have an impact on the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serena. Any discussion on, further discussion on Article 30? Okay, hearing none. We'll call for the question. Do you want a roll call vote? Okay, we have a request for a roll call vote on Article 30. All in favor of the Article 30, when the clerk calls your name, as presented, please signify by saying yes or aye, all opposed by no or nay. Madam Clerk?
Bell. Barubi. Brown. Camuso. Chapouras. Connors. Costello. Codham. Cross. Curry. Davis. Delios. Doherty. Dunn. Federico. Ferrari. Goodwin. Grabowski. Herman Durand. Hickman. Kelly. Long. LaPreste. Minugian. McCarthy. McCullough. Meredith. Mareschi. O'Brien. Haleshi. Palumba. Panetta. Panico. Hayolini. Polente. Rakinnick. Ring. Rosetti. Sacco. Shenna. Scuzzarella. Schalkowski. Spencer. Straznick. Thompson. Travers. Wallace. Whitcomb. Worthley. 38 yea, six nays, five absent.
Okay, with that, Article 30 has passed. As a courtesy to the Planning Board, Mr. Long moves Article 31 for consideration to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Saugus by adding the following. Amend Article 21, Business Highway Sustainable Development Zoning District, Section 21.10, Dimensional and Density Regulations, by deleting the following section under 21.10E Height. It is permissible to request a special permit from the Saugus Board of Selectmen, SP2, to increase the height beyond what is allowed as of right within a range not to exceed five stories at a maximum height of 60 feet. A, any structure over 55 feet in height allowed by special permit by the Board of Selectmen must be at least 100 feet away from any property line. And by adding the following section under 21.10E Height. Two, it is permissible to request a special permit from the Saugus Board of Selectmen, SP2, to increase the height over three stories, 40 feet, within a range not to exceed five stories and a maximum height of 60 feet. A, any structure over four stories and 50 feet in height allowed by a special permit by the Board of Selectmen, SP2, must be at least 100 feet away from any property line. Do I have a second on Article 31 as presented? This, again, the recommendation of the Planning Board was for, was favorable on Article 31. They recommended passage. Made and seconded. Any discussion on Article 31? Mr. Serena?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. The first part of two was the same as what you voted last, at the last article. And the second part was when Town Meeting changed the setbacks to the zoning in 2021. It was as of right, 55 feet, so now we bring that down to 50 feet. So anything over 50 to 60 feet would need a 100-foot setback. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serena. Any further discussion on Article 31? Okay, hearing none. I will call for the question. All in favor of Article 31 as presented, basically what's changing is the, under Section 2, beyond what is allowed as of right becomes over three stories, 40 feet, and under A, 55 feet becomes four stories, 50 feet in height. All in favor of Article 31 as presented, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Okay, because there is a discrepancy, we got to go for the 2/3, so I will ask for a roll call vote. Again, if you're in favor of Article 31 as presented, just signify by yes or yea when the clerk calls your name.
Bell. Barubi. Brown. Camuso. Chapouras. Connors. Costello. Codham. Curry, I'm sorry, Cross. Curry. Davis. Delios. Doherty. Dunn. Federico. Ferrari. Goodwin. Grabowski. Herman Durand. Hickman. Kelly. Long. LaPreste. Minugian. McCarthy. McCullough. Meredith. Mareschi. O'Brien. Haleshi. Palumba. Panetta. Panico. Hayolini. Polente. Polente. Rakinnick. Ring. Rosetti. Sacco. Shenna. Scuzzarella. Schalkowski. Spencer. Straznick. Thompson. Travers. Wallace. Whitcomb. Worthley. 38 yays, six nays, five absent.
Okay, with that, Article 30, Article 31, I'm sorry, has passed. As a courtesy to the planning board, Mr. Long moves Article 32 for consideration to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Saugus by adding the following. Amend Article 21, Business Highway Sustainable Development Zoning District, Section 21.10 Dimensional and Density Regulations, by deleting the sentence in 21.10f, additional height requirements within the BHR district. One, structures or portions of structures within 50 feet of the buffer zone required by Section 21.10d, one shall not exceed a height of three stories to a maximum height of 40 feet. And by adding the following new section, new sentence, I'm sorry, in 21.10f, additional height requirements within the BHR district. One, structures or portions of structures located in a business highway residential district shall not exceed a height limit of three stories and 40 feet. Do I have a second on Article 32? Again, the recommendation from the planning board is favorable on Article 32, they recommend passage. Any discussion on Article 32? Mr. Sereno.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meet members, ladies and gentlemen. This limits the height in just them seven lots that I went over before you, that abuts the residential districts from three stories, 40 feet. And it protects all the residents on Pleasant Street, Cherry Street, Hawks Road, Sanders Drive, David Drive, Forest Street, Isla Road, Spring Street, and Walnut Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sereno. Any further discussion on Article 32? Okay, hearing none. We'll call for the question. All in favor of the article as presented, signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right. I was going to say, in the interest of saving time, I think there's enough, there were some no's, but if we can do this with a show of hands, if I could ask the tellers to take the count. So on Article 32, all in favor of the article as presented, please signify by raising your right hand. The tellers will take the count. And all opposed, please raise your right hand. So 38 to 6 with five absent. Article 32 has passed. As a courtesy to the planning board, Mr. Long moves Article 33 for consideration to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Saugus by adding the following. Amend Article 21, Business Highway Sustainable Development Zoning District, Section 21.10 Dimensional and Density Regulations, by deleting the following section under 21.10h density. One, residential 20 units per acre maximum. And by adding the following new section under 21.10h density, number one, residential 15 units per acre maximum. Do I have, and do I have a second on Article 33? And again, we have the recommendation from the planning board, which was favorable, they recommend passage of Article 33. Discussion? Mr. Sereno.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meet members, ladies and gentlemen. Regarding the density, first of all, I want to thank the planning board for helping me out with these things. It does, these articles, it lowers it from 20 to 15, and that's in line with the MBTA district. But it doesn't include any lots under nine acres, so the apartments could go from 3,840 apartments down to 2,880 apartments if the 15 units was adopted. It would decrease the potential apartments of 960, but like I said, it doesn't include lots under nine acres or smaller lots that can be combined into larger lots, and it is in line with the current MBTA district. I think there's other things we need to keep in mind. Concern of overdevelopment in town and decades of the state's inadequate affordable housing policies. Private developers only have to commit 10% to your affordable housing units. So if we have 10,000 units baseline, 10,000 homes in town, they build 100 units, only 10 has to go to affordable housing. Under the 10,000, you're going to need 900 affordable housing. We have 900 affordable housing units. Adding 10, 10 units to that baseline of 10,000, you're bringing it up to 10,100. So with this private, with this 10%, you're not really gaining anything. On a 40B restricted development, that requires 25% of affordable housing. So for every 100 new units that are built by the time you increase your baseline of how many units you have in town, figure that out by 10%, you're only gaining 15 units. So between that, the inadequate housing policies from the state over, for decades, and increasing homeless population, and increasing migrant population, the state's new MBTA zoning bylaw, I know a few years ago when the people were trying to sell that Clifton deal bylaw to approve apartments in Clifton deal, the MBTA zoning bylaw, they didn't tell you that the apartments were for families only under that law. They was trying to sell it as professionals, single families, you know, single kids coming in, young professionals from Boston and heading back. And just the impact, and plus the issues with developers from the couple projects that we have now with the planning board. Talked to one of them, they'll tell you all about them issues and the impact. You got to look at the impact of the infrastructure, police, by our school system. And you got to consider the possibility also of the state mandate for the housing policies like the MBTA. So I think this, we need to get ahead of the curve here. Building apartments for non-Saugus residents doesn't help Saugus at all. It's the fastest way to change our character of a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sereno. Any further discussion on Article 33? Yes, Mr. Minugian.
Throughout, Mr. Moderator, here, Minugian, precinct 10. Throughout town, for an R4 district, condominiums oftentimes we convert industrial land beside railroad tracks, the old industrial railroad tracks, we converted to R4, like Denver Street. We did ALCO, we converted that to R4, although that wasn't industrial. It's common to see. And that requires 2,500 feet per unit, per condominium. By, if there's 43,560 feet in an acre, and you go into 15, 15 apartments or units, units per acre, that's 2,904 feet of land that would be necessary. It's more stringent than what we have in the rest of town. Currently, it's 20, and that's 2,178 feet per acre, per unit. So my point is, is that where the Business Highway District is going to be more restrictive than the rest of town. Did you consider that? And if so, why?
Thank you, Mr. Minugian.
I think based on, Tom Eaton from precinct 10, I think based on his calculations, I don't think he's taken into account the height. As you go higher, you're allowed more units. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sereno. Any further discussion? Yes.
Mr. Moderator, fellow town meet members, I only have a question. The previous speaker, Selectman Sereno, he mentioned several times in there this MBTA zoning. This change does not apply to that zoning. We still have to deal with that at a later date, correct? Okay, thank you.
The answer to that was correct, for those who didn't hear it, but thank you, Mr. Grabowski. Yes, Mr. Sereno.
Town meet members, ladies and gentlemen, that's why I kept it at 15 after discussion with the planning board. We have to consider the MBTA zoning. I don't think we're going to be able to go any lower than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sereno. Any further discussion on Article 33? Okay, hearing none. I'll call for the question. All in favor of Article 33 as presented, changing the density from residential 20 units per acre maximum to 15 units per acre maximum for the Business Highway Sustainable Development Zoning District, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Okay, and once again, I'm going to ask if the tellers will take the count, and all in favor of Article 33 as presented, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, please signify by raising your right hand, and the tellers will take the count. All right, with that, Article 33 has passed. That concludes all of the business that we have before us for this session. I'm going to be reaching out by email next week, looking to fill some committee assignments, hope to hear back from anyone who's interested in serving on them. Otherwise, I hope everyone enjoys their summer, and we'll hopefully see you all back here next year or at the calling of the next special town meeting, whichever comes first. At that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Move second? All in favor of adjournment? Anybody opposed? I didn't think so. All right. Thank you, guys.